Meeting of the Deering County Planning Commission. To order.
Mr. Callen.
Here.
Ms. Hyde.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Mr. Slitter.
Yeah.
Chairman Breland.
Here. Thanks everyone. The agenda we have to review and the adoption of the meeting agenda is there's one that's over that has any questions or additions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as per someone. Start.
Motion made, perfectly seconded, any discussion?
Ms. Hyde. Mr. Williams. Mr. Slitter.
Aye.
Mr. Callen.
Aye.
Chairman Breland.
Next, I have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes June 6, 2023 regularly, so we had a chance to review the minutes presented, are they okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 6, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
So move.
Same thing, probably seconded to approve the minutes, so any group discussion?
I don't think I should buzz on that, I'll be like the last team.
Okay, well, yeah.
You're going to give your minutes of meeting that one.
Okay. Yep, so we'll just, I guess you can call him a name, he'll just say.
Mr. Williams.
What's that?
Mr. Slitter.
Aye.
Mr. Callen.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde. Ah, Chairman Breland.
Aye. Next, I have on the agenda is the citizens' comment period, of course, it's three minutes for everyone, citizens, for anyone else, and if you could please state your name and your address when you've addressed the board. This, there is a public hearing tonight, so these citizens' comment periods, or anything else you wish to talk about at this time, if you have anything specifically for the public hearing, wait for the public hearing. Do that, and I'll open the citizens' comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Air, and members of the commission, I'm Jessica Budd, I live in Lunsford, Central Province in Paris. Um, it's my understanding that the central apartments matter is no longer going to be heard on the meeting until this evening, and that it's been continued to September, so I'll reserve my comments on the substance of the matter until the September meeting. But I did want to make a couple of comments about the ability for the citizens to follow along with the process and to have some meaningful participation. It's been challenging for us to know what's going on and be able to follow along and know when things are happening. Additionally, at the last meeting in April, when this was last taken up, the matter was listed on the agenda under the public hearing part of the agenda. We had come with the understanding we would be given an opportunity to speak on the matter, but most importantly, to hear Mr. Baker's revised presentation, his changes to the project, and have an opportunity to respond to those changes. However, when we first arrived at the meeting, a motion was made to move the matter from the public hearing portion of the agenda to the unfinished business portion of the agenda. Kind of threw my neighbors for a loop because they didn't know what that meant and that they wouldn't have an opportunity to hear the presentation and respond to it. Also, there were no meeting materials on the project, included in the meeting materials ahead of the meeting, or even still currently, they're not posted online. So it's difficult for us to know what's going on, and it's challenging when we don't have an opportunity, when the project is changed, to come back and offer feedback. And it seems like the applicant gets continued bites of the apple to make changes, and the project evolves, but the citizens don't get an equal opportunity to participate. Also, because the matter is included on the unfinished business portion of the agenda, it makes it hard for us to look at an agenda and know when it's going to come up. So for example, for today, I did not know that it wouldn't be on the agenda until I reached out to Ms. Graham, and she very kindly took time out of her day to answer my question and let me know that it wasn't going to be heard. So please consider that going forward, that it is difficult for us as citizens to have some participation. Thank you.
I'm Barbara, I live at 1603 Old Newcastle Road, but that's not what we're talking about right now. Um, I would like to officially object to the proposed ban on solar farms along the main roads through the county. There is no justification given with this proposal at all, and solar farms are clean, they are not noisy, they don't increase traffic, they, all they really do is bring revenue to our county. So I don't see any reason to have a length and band on them amongst any of the main roads, but we have no such ban for any other business or facility. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for citizen comment period? Close citizen comment period. Move straight into public hearing, CP additional use permit 03-2023, the old Newcastle properties, Ms. Graham, you have a presentation.
Evening. So tonight, we have a request for a conditional use permit from Old Newcastle Properties to Mr. Kistner. Uh, we have Mr. Kistner here and Mr. Blueback for later on for questions, and they as well have a presentation. Uh, the property is located on Old Newcastle Road, it's between the houses of 1475 and 1561 Old Newcastle. Um, so 442.2 acre parcels and AC, um, and they're wanting to do a sand and gravel operation on approximately 149 acres. Um, little bit of history, this was back in 1988, um, a sand and gravel pit. Um, the later on, it was run by Luckstone, Manif, Matt, and I, sand and gravel, and it's been closed for about 15 years. So with this, they did submit a preliminary site plan, which you should have a copy of. This is the location here. And this is the commercial entrance that's proposed. Um, tonight, you had before you, um, an email where we went back and forth with VDOT. There were some concerns about the traffic, so I did reach back out to VDOT. Originally, they did not want a, um, traffic impact analysis because it was previously a sand and gravel pit, and they didn't think it would be an increase. But I did let them know that we had several citizens that were concerned about the traffic on the road and what the road and, um, maybe possibly being dangerous. Um, so you do have that in front of you. I don't know, they're doing a review, but they have not finished the review. Um, their comments were slight distance lines appear accurate, slight distance easement will need to be recorded prior to issuance of a VDOT permit. Um, bullet pipe needed for the entrance. They want to increase the asphalt thickness due to the heavy loaded trucks and increase the entrance radius to 50. Um, that's all they have for now, they're still doing reviews, they didn't, they didn't have any other information. Um, did, uh, reach out to the applicants and, uh, they have given us, um, information about maybe being 50 trips per day, I believe VDOT said it was a little bit more. Um, they have the plan at 190 daily trips. Um, on Old Newcastle, the site generating approximately 80 vehicle trips per day, while both numbers are not significant. There may be a time when opposing vehicles are passing along the roadway, uh, so it'd be difficult to say if that would present a problem with them reopening it. They'll have a total of 70, 10 employees, their start date is unknown, but they estimated it two years. The life expectancy of the operation is 20 to 25 years, there'll be no blasting on the site. Uh, the only equipment to be used are excavators and trucks. Their hours of operation are proposed seven to seven, Monday through Friday, and seven, Tuesday on Saturdays, when those Sundays are holidays, unless there, there's an emergency. Um, and all wetlands will be, on site will be protected. And so with this, um, if the planning, um, commission recommends approval to board, we have 14 recommendations, um, conditions, um, to go with that. Um, one is to have a copy of the mine's barrels, um, and interview permit. Um, a lawful being required between any adjacent residents in the subject property, a site plan submitted to the planning department for approval prior to any mining operation. Any amendments to the mining permit be submitted to the planning department for review. Uh, no machinery except for machinery equipment, use for extrication of the coke, processing, transport of materials. Um, normal farming equipment may be located in the area. Lighting, only the minimum necessary, um, for emergency purposes, and they should use the dark sky lighting techniques. Noise generated by the mining, processing, and delivering shall be kept at a minimum using reasonable methods, methods, um, for the activities taken place. No loudspeakers, whistles, forms to be used as part of the operation, and no explosives or blasting allowed at the site. Uh, commercial entrance shall be installed and approved by VDOT prior to any mining operation. The applicant, uh, to develop a proactive safety brochure for all truck operators with detail of safe driving practices. Including adherence to the posted speed limit for the entirely people roads. Uh, the brochure shall be reviewed and approved by the sheriff's office, and a copy of the brochure shall be given to each truck driver using the facility. A safety brochure shall be in the scales and available for review by county staff and law enforcement officials. And the signs shall be posted in a clearly visible location on the site to inform all of the haulers of this policy. Um, the hours of operation, which we are 8,000, so I did, uh, wetlands delineated and protected. Um, county notified upon completion of requirements for, uh, to reclaim the right. Um, and to, at which time, authority to continue your occupation on the site by virtue of the CUP shall cease. Non-compliance of the mine permit or site plan shall be deemed sufficient reason to revoke the CUP above the board supervisors. And all conditions shall be applicable to the applicant. Um, back to the applicant, unless you have any questions for me?
But I have a couple of questions, Ms. Graham. You said the, um, this previously was a permitted pit through DMMA. Is that permit still current, or were they going to go back to reapply?
They, they would have to reapply, they'd have to get their own permit. Um, from what I've been told, that, uh, mining operation's been placed about 15 years.
And I read it in here. Um, it looks like we reached out to Mr. Brooks here, Mr. Brooks at VDOT. So is, is he telling you that he does not, or VDOT does not have any issues with the road the way it is now being used, or is he saying that's to be determined?
Originally, they had told me they did not have any issues with it. Uh, we've had several people calling and come in and email, which I gave you a copy of the email. Um, the biggest concern is the traffic on the road. Um, so one individual that came in yesterday, uh, told me that the road was only 14 and a half feet wide. Um, so it would be impossible for two trucks to pass at 14 and a half feet wide. Um, I was also told that the speed limit is 55 on that road. So, um, people have expressed that they do walk and run on that road, um, and there, there is no shoulder, it just drops down. So some of those are, are the main concerns that a lot of people have that, oh, and have questions.
I, I know it varies depending on, on the different schools, but do you have any idea what time the buses run through that area?
I don't.
I'm sure that's something one of the people here.
But with this concern, I did reach out again yesterday to Mr. Brooks, and, um, the email that he sent back today is, oh, what happened in front of you? So they do have a site plan that they're, they're reviewing, but they have not completed the review.
Ms. Graham, this, the same email, um, with Mr. Brooks. It cites, um, 190 daily vehicle trips. I'm guessing that's combined personal and commercial vehicle trip, correct?
Um, from what I understand, he said it's generating approximately 80 vehicle trips today, uh, per day, I guess, in and out.
Okay. Yeah, the, well, the, the plan that we saw was 50 trips, um, but that was, I don't know if that was in, in hour. It's a big discrepancy between 50 and 80, that's what I'm trying to figure out where, where, which is more accurate.
When I, um, asked, uh, Mr. Blueback, I was told 50 vehicle trips per day, they're here, so we may be able to get this clarified on that.
Sure. I have one waiting for.
Okay.
In my memory and knowledge of this county, that road was done under the wall rusted plane, which means they just took the dirt path and put some rocky gravel to keep the dust down. That road shouldn't have stayed heavy traffic, purely. So I want to know where Mr. Brooks got his information from. And if you go look at the road, you can see what I'm talking about. This just had some tall gravel put on the dirt road to keep the dust down, because it used to be a dirt road. It was never made and built like it did from 360 in to where Luckstone was.
Now, I was told, um, I hope I get, get it right, that Carolyn Road, um, I believe that the solar farm, um, took care of paving and widening that.
Yes.
But it stopped at the curve when it became Old Newcastle.
Yes, it's a whole different, if anybody drives it, a truck can pass on the part that comes into the solar farm. The cheaper than that for the dump truck in the school bus or fire truck. I've had to drive that road with a fire truck, it was hectic. One vehicle going through that, that needless a lot.
Yeah. Fine, good, great.
I don't have anything right now.
If you want to hear what the applicants have to say too as well.
And they also have a presentation, um, we could.
I can, let's try to make that up before we have it here.
Good. Who's?
So, yeah, I guess my intention was to kind of talk about the slides. But my, my name is Zaker Callen, I'm a professional engineer, and I have the name of the company called Watershed Salting. Um, appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight, um, we're, we're here to talk about the proposed sand and gravel mine. Um, we're, we're seeking approval for a proposed sand and gravel mine on Mr. Kistner's property. The, uh, the proposed sand and gravel mine will, um, include mining of two agricultural fields. Um, um, the idea is that you mine the sand and gravel, sort it on site, put it in trucks, and haul it up to various locations for construction projects. Um, the, the, the sand gravel line is expected to generate, we're expecting it to generate 30 to 40, um, trucks per day. Um, there will be seven to 10 employees that work at the site, that's what we're expecting. If we could go back just, I, I guess backwards, um, this is the project location. This is, um, this is the, located about a mile east of the Hanover County boundary. Uh, it's bounded to the south by, uh, the Pumonkey River. Access to the site is off Old Newcastle Road. This is Old Newcastle Road, North Carolina Road, and Route 360. Next slide. So slide shows the existing condition of the property, there's an existing entrance off Old Newcastle Road. The area in purple is land that's owned by Mr. Kistner, that's the 442 acres. The area, um, encompassed in red is the area where they're proposing to do the sand and gravel line. Um, uh, there's an existing entrance off Old Newcastle Road, there's two existing farm fields. Uh, that's the area that they plan to do the mining operation. It's going to be limited to the agricultural fields, so we're not clearing a bunch of land, or, um, um, the, the site also has an existing access road that runs, um, from the upper farm field to the lower farm field. It's bounded, uh, to the west by a solar farm. The agricultural fields are very well screened. Um, there's an existing planted buffer associated with the nutrient bank along the north, east, and south portions of it. Um, there's also, uh, we're leaving a 100-foot buffer that's vegetated along the east edge as well. And there's another several hundred feet of, um, whoops, what did I do?
You touched.
Is this, what did I do now? Thank you. All right, um, next slide, please. Next slide. Uh, this is a ground level shot, this is the upper field, again, right now, it's the cultivated, um, soybean field, you can see the screening off in the distance. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the existing road that, uh, runs through the site and connects the two farm fields. Next, please. This is the lower field, it's currently a farm field. Um, and this is a picture of, uh, one of the planted buffers to the north, um, it includes planted pines, um, and some volunteer, um, I believe they're sycamore trees. Next slide. This is, uh, the proposed operation, uh, there's a entrance. The entrance, um, existing entrance will be upgraded. Uh, we've worked with VDOT, um, had, uh, worked with VDOT closely, our team has. We've, uh, we're committed to complying with what VDOT requires to make the site work. Um, we will have two mining cells. Uh, again, those are in the agricultural portion of the field, we're maintaining the buffer around the perimeters. Uh, there will be an area here where the material is sorted before it's put into trucks and haul away. Okay. Yeah, maybe let's go back. Yes, thank you. Um, when mining operations start, one of the first things that they will do once they, um, get their permit, is they'll come into the site. They'll scrape the top soil to the perimeter, which will create a berm. Uh, the berm does a couple of things. Um, first of all, it helps us control runoff from the site, uh, creates the, a, a visual barrier, it helps with noise. Um, and it helps with erosion, the, the. The, the berm will be seeded and it will be planted with trees. Can we go to the next cell? This is black and white version. Let's go to the next cell. So when they start mining. We can go back. Next, next. Step one is they'll put the berm around the perimeter to help control drainage and erosion. They'll construct a sediment basin down at the bottom, then they'll start mining in a back and forth fashion until it's done. And then that cell will be reclaimed and then they'll move to the next cell. Some of the things that Mr. Kistner has will be doing with this is the sorting area that can be used will be rubber coated. And any, any screens will be rubber coated to mitigate noise. The noise is expected to be similar to a tractor, but the berms will then also help mitigate any noise. Next. And then finally, once mining operations are done, they will reclaim the site. The upper field will all, everything will be removed from the site. The upper field will be planted as a pine forest. And the lower cell will be reclaimed as an open water pond. And that's, that's our presentation. We can open it up to questions.
Go back to the screen. Show me where you would put the equipment that's for sort the sand and gravel.
Okay, it's located right here.
Go back to your point to show the buffer and burner mark.
Oh, the buffer and burner?
Yeah, go to that.
Okay. So that would be the next. The idea is we'll put a buffer and berm.
It shows you. Sorting equipment outside of the buff and burn that you were talking about having off and burn was helping. So if it's outside the buff and burn, I don't see the asset for keeping the noise or dust away from the houses, the solar farm stuff to go east.
What we can do is extend the berm around.
The plan didn't show that and you was, no.
The, the plan doesn't show every detail, but certainly.
You're making a decision about what you're showing us.
Right, understood.
You need to show us better details.
Right, okay.
What's the, what's the power supply going to be? Is this going to be run off of free base power or is it going to be a generator run?
That, that will have to be, be known, yes, please.
So, second question of mine, the which pit would you start digging first?
I think that's.
I would, let me, let me, let me back up the bigger question here. To operate this plant, you need, what, about eight hundred gallons a minute?
No.
Of water?
I was not expecting, no.
What, what would the water supply be? Would you, would you dig a big pond and draw water out of that or?
Yes, I would dig recirculate. That's why we start at the bottom. Water flows, you kind of recirculate.
So y'all would probably dig the, the piece closest to the river first to create a pond to be able to draw water out to operate the plant?
One.
Okay, and then I guess you said that, that would remain a, a lake, if you will, at the end of the day. And then front portion would be reclaimed with the material from the bottom section as well as the material from the top section. So you have a pond in one location and reclaimed field every other. Do you, do you know if the, the plant previously, when it was in operation, did they draw water from the Pumonkey or did they have ponds that they drew water out of? Questions now, we have them later.
I think we need to have a question.
Actually, I do have one question. Mr. Allen, can you point out, if you can go back to the slides, could you point out where the wetlands areas are around these two sites?
I think the, well, I can tell you much of this is wetlands. We, we've almost completely avoided wetlands. And I would say there are no wetlands in the mine cells. I'm not sure will impact any wetlands. If, if there's any wetlands, it would be minor. Wetland impacts just upgrading the, the travel path in between, and those would certainly have to be permitted. But the black and white version does show the wetlands, if we could get. So you can see the stippled area. That's, those are considered wetlands. And those were delineated. We have made minor shifts in our mining area to make sure we are outside of the RPA for this, for that cell and that cell. But yes, a, a good portion of the undermined project is our wetlands. So these are kind of upper plateaus, it's up higher. Again, this is slightly higher ground and it's cultivated and not, not delineated, that's what.
Okay, and the, the road between the two from here looks to be very close in that wetlands area.
It, it, yeah, it's a, it's a road that winds, you know, on each side of it, there are wetlands. But the, but the road is, you know, there, there is a road, an access road running through those wetlands now.
Okay, and how, how wide?
I would say twelve to fifteen feet, I, I'm estimating.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The, the dark, the dark shaded lines, the perimeter, perimeter around the different zones, that, there's, there's the burns or there's just indicating where those extract is.
Those are grating, those are grating lines.
And the berm itself, how tall will that be?
I believe that's a twenty-foot high burn.
Visibility from the adjacent properties, will any of the adjacent properties be able to see the mine itself or equipment or buildings, anything like that?
I feel like it's very well screened. This is an existing planted buffer. So I, I feel like it's very well screened. And then we're also putting, you know, step one will be to put a, a perimeter berm around, but with, even without the perimeter berm, it screens out vegetation.
A berm vegetation plan. And outside of that will also be additional vegetation through trees.
Yes.
So to kind of, let's just look at that. What I, what I learned and doing a little bit of research on this, around the pit area has to be a, a twenty-foot vegetated berm. And, and where the site's at is especially they will definitely the back pit, there's nothing back there other than solar farm on one side and wetlands on the other. The front, and that there are some houses out front there, but, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I think it has to be a twenty-foot buffer around the pit areas, but even the haul road in between the pits and the plant. I think those have to be about half the height of the biggest piece of equipment you would be running in and out of there. So if you had a rubber tire loader with, let's say, eight foot tall tires, then the berm upside the haul road would have to be four foot tall, which would protect the balance. Is that?
Well, we were not envisioning berms along.
That will impact the wetlands as well as the, that might burn on that.
So the goal was to avoid, you know, we were not planning on berms along the whole, the whole road.
So DM and D is not going to require burns on the whole, and that's a question.
D, DMME wants it to be well screened, and I think it is very well screened. You know, step, step one is always push the top soil to the side. And this area is screened by the existing, by the existing planted buffer visually. But, but, but Shane, Shane and I have talked and based on discussions with sand gravel operators, they want to put a berm around the perimeter, around the entire perimeter.
You have a sign up sheet?
Yes.
Did everybody get the sign up sheet for speaking at the top of the hearing? Okay, so now, here, C B G zero three dash twenty twenty. And who is the first person?
Robert Arwin.
Good evening, this is Chair, members of the commission. My biggest concern is all practical hills in the capital road as a state. I was the one that took the measurements on the road yesterday. Seven different places within a one-mile spread of the impure suppose of North Carolina Road. And at the widest point I come up is fourteen foot six inches. At the Digginson, I'm just on the age sixty-one of the pattern that you would have is the engineer drawing for a VDOT entrance. It's clearly stated on our, it's measured at fourteen foot one inches. So it's not something that just come up overnight. You know, it, it was in Black and White. That average width of an eighteen-wheel truck or dump truck is eighteen foot six inches.
Excuse me?
Eighteen foot six wide?
Excuse me?
Eight foot, eight foot one, eight foot six, I'm sorry. So, put two and the other. Way I got to go. The question, I think Mr. Kullam asked, but the school bus is around seven fifteen, seven twenty. Three and a half years ago, I recorded a video of the school bus at the start. Car hanging. School bus had been back up the road. They get off the side of the road, so called, I lie. I sent it to VDOT. It won ten minutes, my phone rang because of the school bus involved. But it went on down there. Nothing was ever done. Old and past the road has people that walk their road every day, small children, infants and strollers, animals, ride bicycles, and they run seven days a week. Those are pure safety hazards, but one thing the road isn't light enough. Mr. Williams, you brought it up. The road is crumbling apart right, right now. I, I looked at it, good. This is following the business. So how in the world can you sustain forty thousand or eighty thousand pound trucks? I learn it every day, it's impossible.
I'm glad you're.
Chairman Greenwood and members of the planning commission and staff. For the record, my name is Don Wright, I live in the Bay of York here. And I want to welcome Mr. Williams to the planning commission. My concern is what you've heard a lot of already tonight. Visibility and the weather that road. About four years ago, my wife and I were left at the government because we were so concerned with the maintenance of the secondary road in King William County. The maintenance funds and then pull way back equipment and then pull back. So we weren't getting anywhere near the kind of maintenance that we had in several years, or previous years. The governor's office directed the VDOT district administrator, Marcy Parker, to meet with us. We met with her one morning, rode over several of the roads in the county. And the last road we rode over was Old Newcastle Road. We came off of three sixty down the east end of Newcastle Road. And this way you go down the hill into the bottom there. The road was in extremely poor condition. We got to a point behind Lockton's Farm and the road was really crumbling. And Ms. Parker said, this road is collapsing. And indeed, it can be, it was. Over the next several months, VDOT made some repairs to that road. It's in better shape now, but it's not in as good a shape as it may have been. But on the west end of Old Newcastle Road, they didn't do any repairs. And as I've been pointing out, the road is only, because things get wide. The road, I'm sure, and I, I do have some experience in this, but I'm sure that road will not sustain forty or fifty tandem truckloads of gravel running across there today. So I would ask that the planning commission ask that VDOT, before anything, anything is approved, that VDOT do a study on that road to determine what do we take to improve the road to handle the scattered truck traffic? Or do we take the winding road, winding ditches and the shoulders, that's of the trucks and school buses and pass of that in the top? That the applicant be required to reach the old Newcastle Road from the entrance out to North Carolina Road. And that no truck is allowed to use the east end of Old Newcastle Road. The, that should come because of the applicant. And if it's not, then I would recommend that the board supervisor put a bond on the road, but at least do not. However, I, I don't, I just don't think the road, if they don't bring it up speed before anything's all done, then that's a perfect road to have to stand up over a couple of years. So, that's all the best, thanks. So, um, that's all that says, thank you.
Don Morris.
Hello, my name is John Morris. I live on Old Newcastle Road. Uh, my son and I were out there today taking pictures of the road vehicle traffic on the road. I had some pictures, if you'd like to see where there was a rollback. And a small truck could not fit down the road at the same time. I mean, I got the picture right here. It's from today.
Yeah.
Okay, well, what, okay, because I wasn't, but what, and then I've got a picture that I can show you, go afterwards, where there's wood pickup truck and Honda CRV. The mirrors touch if they stay on the road. Okay, I drive a tractor trailer, I drive twelve thousand miles a month a day. I will not bring my truck home because I don't want to take it down that road. Also, Hollyfield and Luckstone. If you go down North Carolina Avenue, where they widened it, they didn't enter, Luckstone didn't enter down there. They drove down because Mister Mills owns the farm, let's be part of my truck down there, and I park it on the scale that Luckstone used to use. So when they went in, and I know all the reclaiming land, because my house, if, I knew the Martins and everybody that lived there, so I got to go on the property and stuff like that. They did not come down Old Newcastle. They went straight down North Carolina, straight into Hollyfield and Mon back there. When you get to the back ones, they went through the back of the farm, is how they did it. The truck, somebody's gonna get killed. We'll just let them know that, because if they go down, these kids, these school buses going down the road are not gonna fit a truck of us. So if they're pulling ten, thirty tons, that's sixty thousand pounds, you're not gonna have, and somebody's gonna flip over, it's gonna flip over on car, school bus, somebody's gonna die. The road is not gonna take the work. I ride these roads every day. I will not pull a tractor trailer down that road to my own house, even. So I asked Ed to park it there. So I'm, y'all need to look at the road. You're right. The road is nothing, you can, I got pictures, drive down there. It's not that far, it's twenty minutes away. The road is nothing but tar, gravel and tar over two years. I've been living on the road for fifteen years. It's falling apart, and we've got buses, a few tractors, and the people that live on it. And the road's falling apart. You get, let's say forty trucks going in, forty trucks going out. Right? Sixty thousand pounds in the summertime, that road's not gonna last a summer. It's not lasting that. So I, I agree with the gentleman that they should make, if he wants his quarry in there, have him pay for the road, not the taxpayers in the county.
Arbor, Arbor Mark.
Yes, I also live on Old Newcastle, um, our, we actually live at six zero three, which is just two properties over from where this is happening. And my family is among the people who like to, you know, walk the street with our dogs and, and our young children. So we are very concerned about all these trucks coming through. So in the proposal, it says fifty trucks a day on average, and presumably those trucks have to come in, pick up their stuff and then leave, right? They're not just gonna go one way. Which means we're gonna have a hundred trucks a day going by our house. And if that's a twelve hour period, that means on average a truck every eight minutes, all day, every day. That road is not gonna be usable by anyone else for any other purpose. Again, the speed limit is fifty five miles an hour. If you're having these dump trucks roaring down there at that speed, you know, you can't have kids or animals or people, you know, that wants to be jogging. Um, this is gonna have an effect on the people that like punch, we're gonna have all kinds of roadkill, um, in the wintertime, seven AM to seven PM, there will be multiple hours where it's pitch dark and these trucks are still gonna be barely down our little street, whereas John said, even huge as normal size pickup trucks can barely pass each other in a safe manner. So, um, that's my first concern. Also, in the actual document that was posted on the Kingland土地site, there was a list of conditions that have to be met for resource extraction. Um, for the conditional use permit, and one of them was that the access road can be a minor residential road. But if you look at the zoning now, there's already residential zoning on parts of that street. And if you look at the, the planned land use, um, for twenty forty, that was also hopefully provided. Actually, all of Old Newcastle is expected to be residential by twenty forty. And so I feel like this just doesn't even meet the criteria of being alive in this place. As a matter of fact, I have a couple of questions that I was hoping to maybe answer later. Um, one was that, you know, the hours were given, and then unless there is an emergency, I don't know what kind of emergency would cause there to be a need for increased mining, you know, on a Sunday or a holiday, but I would, you know, like to know more about that. And then my other concern is about the, um, safeguarding of the water supply in the area. So mining is not known for being, you know, very groundwater friendly. And the only part that's on the document about that was that they contacted the health department, they were aware of re wells within thousands feet, and they only had information actually on one of those. And so based on that, they, you know, seemed to think that that was gonna be fine. I feel like that should maybe be looked into a little bit more. Maybe they have had that looked into. But, um, you know, along with the lower part, or we don't have the map up, you know, coming right up against the river. And if anything were to happen to that burn, that that whole lower lake that they're building is just gonna go directly into our river, it's probably also gonna be an environmental concern. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Christian Mark.
Good evening. Um, what's my point to the governor and the drugs? Um, just like to add that this road doesn't have much of a shoulder at all. Most part, it's just hitches. Um, and what's happened to me, they'll do, and two cars passing, passing each other, one car into the ditch. Um, and those are just two regular cars. Again, I don't know what would happen if you put a, um, big truck up against a school bus. Um, not to mention walking along that road, and a big vehicle comes past, I'm standing in a ditch. And now a dump truck comes, that's just not gonna be possible at all. So, I would try to.
So let's take him to chairman.
Yeah, does anybody even mind if I turn or does everybody want to? I guess, is they like coming maybe late that want to speak, or now maybe changed their mind and would like to speak now? So you can come on. If not, we will close up the hearing. And we'll have more discussion. Do we have to start in a row? Starting this tight, are you ready? Are you ready? Any few questions or?
I'm not ready.
No, I just started with this.
Sorry.
So I get in order, so we can back and forth the conversation, just starting to help.
Well, after, after hearing the citizens' concerns, and, and I will agree, I, I've gone out there and looked at it. Um, as far as the mine itself goes, the way the mine is, is regulated by DMME, the way the mine regulated for safety. Um, some of the conditional uses put on the mine, that, that's all very reasonable. My, my only, or my, my hangup with this is, I just do not feel like D dot really has weighed in on this. And, and I just don't see how, until we get it rolling, I think it would kind of be a moot point. Until i- if we approve this and V dot says no, then, then we kind of wasted their time. I just don't feel like V dot has properly weighed in on this. But, you know, but for the applicants and their representatives, um, I haven't heard a lot of issues with the mine itself. It seems to be all the way out of the road. So as we try to move forward, it looks like the road is the main concern that needs to be addressed.
I'm shocked that fourteen and a half foot wide road with an speed of fifty five mile an hour. So I don't know if that's, uh, that's a D dot, um.
That's state level.
State.
So any county roads that are unmarked have always been, uh, not important.
Yeah, that's definitely, that's a safety concern without, without large force trucks on them. Oh, I'd be curious if Mister Kussner has anything to say, but he's too long.
Well, I would like to let you all know that.
Go up to the microphone.
You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different ways you can do this thing. I mean, the road needs to be, you know, if V dot says the road needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed, you know, I'm, I'm not going to get sad. Um, there's a lot of things you can do about the truck traffic as well. A lot of, in different places they've used where they've radioed into the mine, and a truck will not pass another truck on the road, the road's narrow. There's, I mean, there's, you can do that. Um, you can set limits on the speed. I mean, the mine can say, listen, you can't come in here faster than thirty five miles an hour, you know? No truck here. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that can be done to make it safer and better for the community. So, you know, I just wanted to let you know that everything is not here, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of common sense type of stuff that can be done as well, so. Do you have any other questions?
We're just kind of picking out now here, being the, the complaints all are centered around the, the same topic. And that is the, the road itself, traffic, safety, um.
Sure, we said from the beginning that what we're gonna do with V dot says needs to be done. There's no way around that. So, you know, if they say it needs to be wide, or if they say it needs to go black dark, honestly, I suppose. That's what you gotta do.
Have you, um, it sounds like the previous, uh, Luckstone mine that was there, sounds like the, the access to the parcel that, that you had was, um, was accessed by the solar fields, um, solar farms that are accessible up, uh, North Carolina Avenue, that, that.
Yeah.
Wasn't that? Have you had any discussions with the owners of that, of that property about the east end or something that could access your parcel from North Carolina? Uh, way of the solar fields? Is that a possible way around utilizing that part of the gas grid?
It has not been discussed with them, but I think the problem is that would be any kind of dust. You know, I don't know if a buffer could be high enough, that's probably what they're concerned with the.
I'm just trying to think of any alternatives that would require having to completely reconstruct the road to make it suitable for that, those types of roads. Yeah, my, my biggest concerns coming into this were the noise, the visibility and traffic. Uh, the, the noise and visibility, I feel pretty comfortable with. The, um, the, the traffic, obviously, it still needs to be resolved, um.
Yeah, we didn't know any of that until V dot until tonight. As far as they told us, everything was fine, other than they did have some stipulations. But, yeah, until tonight, I didn't hear that they were up in the air or anything else, so.
I guess V dot kind of dropped the bulbs. Like I said, they assumed that the whole Luckstone quarry had the same entrance, I guess, like I said. However, it slipped the cracks, you didn't know they were coming a different way. So I guess I think we're gonna have to get them to come back, but I guess that's something we can stipulate, let's finish getting, that'll be better than that.
Just your English, Jeremy.
Well, I, I just have one question, uh, that may would alleviate half of the problem anyway. Is, is coming out of the plant and only going left an option? So you wouldn't even have to go right?
Yes.
So that would at least take care of?
Yes.
And when you're coming out the plant, you would not go right out of three sixty, you'd have to go left. So, again, it doesn't solve the problem, but that takes a large portion. And the bulk of the road is probably twice or three times as much road to the right.
Yes, it is to the left, yes. So if there's road work that needs to be done, I mean, it would, everything would be to the left.
And, you know, I would also point out, on the other side of three sixty, there's an operating, operating sand gravel plant on a very similar road. And probably about the same distance off of three sixty. And I actually live on West River Road, the Vermont plant, which West River is a nice wide road, so we'll take that out for the discussion. But one of the things that I was involved with, um, as a, as a homeowner, landowner with young kids and the same concerns as other people had, they did, uh, they were able to limit the speed on the trucks, you know, regardless if it was fifty five or not, they imposed thirty five. And I would say the folks.
Hello?
Somebody had something to say. Um, so I know that's very possible, even though if speed limits, but you're right, you can impose.
Sure.
Um, and they did impose the hours, the number of trucks. And I will say, hey, with sand gravel, in my opinion, has done a very good job of adhering to that.
And you, you can even do, the trucks can't come through until after the school bus.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's, it's.
And that's the way it is with, with the Vermont plant that shut down now, because it was in operation for probably ten years. And that's one of the things that we were successful in getting put in there is, they, they could not, they can run the plant, but they could not haul from the plant until after eight thirty. That's it. So I, you know, I still go back to the, the V dot question is, is the, the meat and potatoes of this whole thing, and totally, again, I'm seeing you guys kind of got blindsided with it there tonight. I mean, I, I still think that's the, the biggest part of this equation that would help us make a decision.
And, yeah, just so you know, I mean, like I said before, I'm gonna be able to be, uh, set weeks to be done. You know, whatever that might be, so it'll be up to them.
That's my turn.
Yep, yep. I'm not as easy as they are. I've been around mines all my life. I've been in your shoes in front of the board trying to get one. So I know how heated it can be. But you're dust controlled for the solar farms that are next to you. And you talk about building burns and truckloads. You're talking about it's clean. I drove through there looking at it. It's a lower trees, a eardrum, you can see through it, so you see the solar panels. How are y'all going to come there and build a site and not impact your neighbors' solar farm? You know, solar don't take dust.
Well, not only is it a hedge, but there's also another. Did you see the other trees?
Uh, barrier. Okay, I'm going by looking at what you're showing. And driving into the weather that y'all have in there. And looking to the light, looking at solar panels, okay? And you're saying you can build a berm all the way around.
Yeah.
Okay? To build a berm around it. Uh, your berm will stay away from the edge and still have that? Because you've got wetlands that you're crossing, driving to. You know, that place is a potential nightmare if somebody doesn't have a plan with their doing.
Well, you know, how many regulations there are. I'm not just going down there with bulldozers. I don't want some dirt ring. I mean, everything's regulated.
And, you know, I've got a truck on Old Newcastle, I know how bad it is. I'd hate to see that not taken care of, but just like when I ask questions, you show one thing, you gotta burn one way, and they say, oh no, we'll burn around that. Y'all are answering a lot of things that you're not presenting us the facts. I believe we need, well, just like, you don't know how you go path, so you don't know it's a general way, you know, coming in off the power lines. When we ask them that way, you we ask how you prepare your system for your mine.
Well, mine's not going there.
You, you're asking, you're not showing us a full plan of what you want to do and asking us, saying, we are here protecting the people in YouTube. We don't want to pass something that it hurts the people or that it makes it impossible for you.
I don't wanna do that.
We need to come up with a compromise that people can live with. And if we don't have all the facts in front of us before we make a decision, I don't feel we're doing a fair job to the people.
I understand. I'll leave you too. I'm, I'm not doing anything to entertain the buzz. So, I mean, but some things still need to be turned.
So similar to Mister Sluter, some of the concerns that I had coming in tonight were the noise, the visibility, the traffic. I, I know there's been a lot of conversation about the traffic. Um, so I'm not gonna. Um, so I'm not gonna continue that conversation, you already know. But I am concerned about the dust and I, and the impact on the neighbors as well as the wetlands. Um. Again, I know you're gonna follow all the regulations that are put before you as far as that's concerned. But I, I'm one of those people that's a supporter of making sure that we don't have any.
So why don't we table this for thirty days, give them a little time, you know?
Well, I, 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 I gotta say something. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, to, to a couple of points. One, um, it is highly regulated. The, as far as the dust goes, DMME is gonna require water trucks for dust control and, and stuff like that. I am very familiar with that as well. As far as creating dust for the adjacent solar farm, I, I do not think Mr. Kestner should be impacted by what's on the adjacent property next to him. Just because someone beat him to the punch, it should not impact what he can do with his property. So I, I understand what Mr. Williams is saying with the solar panels, but there are measures put in place. They do have to have water trucks. They do have to keep the roads watered down to, to try to prevent as much dust as possible. And, and I'll just, I'll go back to the, the road and, and the BDOT issue is, is my biggest issue. So, in that, I would agree with you until we get answers for those questions. I, I don't think we can do anything but.
Yeah, I agree. It sounds like the BDOT thing is main thing that your business is kind of okay with the plan, but.
We could bring what someone pointed out. We, we more or less work the line side. We thought we had an issue to take care of and then boom, we got it. Give us a little bit of time to fix it.
Right. That's why table and would give you extra time. It doesn't really do anything. So, and, yeah. I don't know if you need to discuss with council, do you think how long? Would a month be okay? Or would you need more?
I think it would depend on BDOT.
That's true.
You know, I, I, I would be ready, but I'm not sure.
That's true. Nice. Um, it's wagging. We saw before we had trouble sometimes we take stuff to West Point and BDOT wouldn't get back to us. I'm pretty sure you wouldn't think that since we just told them.
I think we at least need to go to September.
Okay. We could try that and then if it's not, God, it was, oh, we could push it further, I guess.
I think that gives an opportunity as well for Mr. Kestner to touch base with some of the.
Right. Or the other question, maybe the power issue, if you just find out some, if maybe you may want to do that as a BDOT. Like I said, you have to follow what it say, but I agree with, uh, what everybody said too. And I was worried about that. Like I said, when North Carolina goes, North Carolina used to go straight in Newcastle, like I said, it's a sharp right turn. And I, I don't have a big truck, but that is a negative return. So, I mean, like you said, it's BDOT needs to, I don't know how far they go. Do they just look at the entrance? Do they look at the road from North Carolina to the entrance to your property? Like I said, that all that needs to be, I guess, Mr. Grand, you check up there to see all that, if there's enough turning radius for big trucks, you know. You've got, I, I've driven it just for instance, but I do Hollyfield and that's sharp turns. But, yeah. Says everybody, David, doing a postponing, a table until September.
Well, so, so that the, the applicants do not have a moving target.
Right.
Um, all the comments I heard here tonight were mostly about, definitely the roads. So if the applicants are able to, to get some resolution to the roads, i- is that the only concerns we have? Or do we don't want to bring them back in September and go, okay, you've gone to BDOT and you've resolved this and, and another issue come up? I personally, um, you know, the questions I asked were, were somewhat leading, you know, whether you run it off a power generator, that really doesn't matter because when the plant's running, you're not going to hear the generator or power's not going to make any noise anyway. The, uh, the water supply, again, these, these plants, the way they operate, they will, they will dig a pond, they will draw water out of the pond and they will recycle it back to the pond. Not saying you won't lose a certain amount of it, but it's not just a constant pull. It recycles back. You would use it in the plant again and again. Plus you pick up groundwater, rainwater, so forth and so on. I just wanna give these guys, when they leave here tonight, a, a, a pretty good understanding of what their, their hurdles are so that they got a fair shot coming back. So the, the road for me is the only issue.
I mean, Mr. Sluter's.
Some of the, some of the myths that I read then were, um, were pedestrian use of, of, of the method as well, um, and average of operation. And it does sound like there's some flexibility with how you want the operations to, to go. And even, and even to a certain extent of the dime, if you need to take that burn around the entire facility, you, um, expand buffers, so forth. So I, I would say that hours of operation, um, yeah, that's one thing. There's obviously people that, that like to, to walk that road, ride bicycles. Um, I don't know how much of just a simple winding, whatever, when they address that, but, um, it, it might be something that you can have conversations with neighbors, the streets specifically, what they'd like to see out of that.
Yeah, there wouldn't be trucks after, uh, probably, probably not much after three. Um, you know, you're trying to build it a little bit there in case somebody later whatever, you know, but generally, most trucks will be running after three. Um, and you can certainly start after school buses are out there. Um, like I said, with speed limits, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things you can do. I mean, you're making the rules, so.
Right. All those things can be added as condition.
And just, just left turn out.
Right.
Get any of that.
No, like I said, as, as bad as the road is to the left, the road to the right, it's earlier.
If there's kind of another night on time.
In the, the amount of trucks, fifty is a high mark. But it's pretty much.
Is it fifty trucks per day in and out? So it would be total of a hundred trips, trips, so to speak, or, or would it be fifty trips being twenty-five trips?
Fifty trips.
That's, that's, that's like a lot. And that we can put too, we can put limits on it. You can't even know more. And like you said, those kind of things can be tweaked.
Yes.
And pond burn, that would be, it has to be built at specific occasions. We can't predict if some disaster would come and break the firm. I mean, we could do the whole we can to do that, like I said, save orders of a lot of hours, put stop, don't drive during bus hours, have this truck speed limit thirty-five, whatever we come up with. Only left turn all day can be done. And I'm just doing, I'll just do that. But the thing is, you're, I know you had the real, you want the specifics too, about the electric, so then you can have all those.
I know what's going on with you, I think, instead of just guessing.
I don't feel like, I don't feel like I'm gonna guess.
And the next thing you heard, now, I heard him mention the groundwater on the local wells. Oh, your neighbors with shallow wells and deep wells, it was talking about impact there. I heard the comment, you know, and that public comments. So that's a issue to people like next to you. What do they really have? If there's shallow wells, you know, it didn't, it's a little impacted. If it's deep well, I understand, you're not gonna dig that deep.
Yeah.
You know, you, you do have some neighbors that are fairly close, not many, but a few. You know, they're all issues. Your people had complaints. You need to answer the questions.
Um, the only thing that I would like to say is if, if we are going to make a motion, um, to table this, what I want to say to the citizens who have come out to speak tonight and the adjoining property owners is since the public hearing has been closed, you won't have another opportunity to speak. However, if we make a motion to table this tonight, if you have additional concerns, your best bet is to come and make sure that staff is aware of those or the planning commission, yes, send it in writing. And or you'll still have a public comment period at whatever meeting that this gets rescheduled for. So please don't think that this is the only time for you to get to speak, but it is the only opportunity that you had as far as a public hearing is concerned.
I'll probably get something on the website. That's what lady said. That maybe is not information on to her particular thing. If, if you were interested in this one, hopefully can get more information online and then people can see, I don't know exactly trying to, she was looking, but we need to get all those things worked out so people know in advance and can come and do that. And maybe we can, on this particular one, instead of like said, two months, we could say, we could set it two months or unless you hear from BDOT satisfactory, what is positively needed. And then we could do it early, but I don't think it's gonna be any earlier.
Yeah.
But let's say, what if it was late, would it be that doesn't get back to us by September?
Where they never talked.
Okay. Consider that okay with that? I can hear the motion is made on Mr. Otto. I still think we're not, we haven't changed it to need a second. So it's been tabled, it's been motioned tables. I think we're all gonna agree that it wants to table. So let's take the motion and, um, just to make sure to table this.
In a second.
I believe you changed it in your bylaws.
Oh, we didn't. No, you didn't say we haven't do one here. Well, then, uh, you want to second it? I was. We think that, let's just do it anyway, just to cover our votes. Just with some, you made a motion.
I'll second.
That's like seconded to table it till the September meeting.
Yes.
And then, uh, any other discussion? We roll call.
Mr. Sluter.
I.
Mr. Callum.
I.
Ms. Tari.
Ah.
Mr. Williams.
Ah.
Chairman Greenwood.
All right. Let's see, P O three, two, three, has been tabled to a convenient. Yeah, especially as I said, so, I mean, BDOT was. I mean, next time we have a lot of agenda is unfinished business.
I've got a few things, not really over this quickly, so I want you to be aware of, um, the a BCA meeting coming up July nineteenth, and we have a, um, variance, um, request coming up for a potential placement of a whole shed in front yard. Uh, August first, your, your next meeting, uh, we have Kennington place coming up for um, review and approval of their preliminary plan. We have a intended date for a joint work session with the board supervisors, August twenty-first. And then our planning commission meeting on the fifth. If we get everything back, we'll have this. We also have, uh, central apartments coming back for you. And we may possibly have a resembling case, um, for the Congress park, um, that side as well. Um, we do have a work session after our meeting to go over the, some of the proposed changes. Um, so we're looking at probably having public hearings, um, for the planning commission and the board in October. If all goes well with that.
Also, though, you had mentioned to make some other two items of unfinished business that the public may be interested in. We did get information on.
The Starbucks?
Yeah. I didn't say the wrong one. No, we had two ones.
We do have plans in and out to review for Starbucks. Um, we have another, um, business that are, are supposed to be up bringing their plans in, but we have not received those yet.
That's the number. We're still waiting.
Any others?
You, uh, you addressed the, uh, the pole on the variance issue there. That, that was before us a couple of months ago. Why is that pushed out further?
Oh, with that, he had to get a flat. Um, and he just did give this plan in for us to have it in this, um, community.
Okay. And it was, it was also posted, uh, I guess on the counties where everybody, that the, the Kennington, uh, that we approved and signed up last time was gonna be kicked back to us.
It, it did. And that's gonna be, I mentioned, August first meeting. The plans, um, you should have received along with your packet below like eleven by seventeen. To give you, uh, a chance to review them prior to.
Next time we have is new business.
Um, you should have your reports that Christina had sent you. Um, if there are any questions, we'll be glad to, to answer those for you.
Looking at the panel, I'm getting a little bit of detail, I'm probably.
Ms. Barbara actually emailed the reports ahead of time to you all so that you have a chance to review them. Um, if you noticed, uh, maybe, maybe you're hoping for them ahead of time. So we've been, anybody saying back up on the new single family dwellings. And Ms. Benny and I have been busy, uh, quite busy receiving, uh, applications for those. So they went back up in June of sixteen, those single family dwellings, and we're still getting them back in. Um, so that's a good sign for us. And the home occupations have dwindled down, but we have gone back up in the new single family dwellings. I'm seeing how that, even all of your normal reports in there, that kind of detail, what we've actually been getting in, we have the property maintenance report and all the normal details. But again, if you have any questions, we've been trying to get these to you ahead of time. And so we've been running, running them as soon as the first hits.
This week, we had, I mean, this month, we had a little bit of time because last week was the holidays, so we had.
Yes.
Did anyone have a change to length in advance or have any questions that are glaring?
I don't have any questions, but again, thank you to Sherry and staff for making sure that you get them to us early as well as all the details that are provided. I really appreciate that.
One thing that was, um, in your packet, it was in part of your chairs tonight. It's not something you go over at the meeting, but there are two applications that we have done up. Uh, if you were, I'll take a look at those. If you have any comments or suggestions, if you could let us know. Email nice to me when you put out any suggestions.
So the rezoning application and.
Okay.
So this, this is the one that I guess that was corrected from where it was brought to our attention at the last meeting?
It was, but we've also did a, a check sheet that's in there. We've done, um, like an information portion of it. And then we added copies of the ordinance as well to more like an information packet with the application.
So this is the case, and I, they come in to do, um, conditioning each from the, you were able to give them to, every stipulation in our, you know, in our county that ordinance is in, every checklist sign they need to live.
That, that is in there. And, um, what we suggest as far as having a pre-application meeting and what the steps are that they will be going through during the C U D process.
That's right. We have a lot of data online too, so.
Um, we haven't got it online yet. We're trying, but it's, it's going on there.
Somebody may not. This, this new application, I, I looked at it and I really don't see it. Maybe I'm overlooking it. The, the big question has always been, hold on, site plan or conceptual plan? Are we now requiring just a conceptual plan?
Well, no, we require according to the, um, ordinance. And that's something that I'd like to discuss in our work session after this. Um, it's, it's attached, um, in that what is required along with the check sheet and everything that's required on the preliminary plan. Um, it's, it's attached, um, in that what is required along with the check sheet and everything that's required on the preliminary plan.
There's something discussed because the board wanted to take that out as well.
It, it's quite a few items. Um, so I would like for us to look at that, uh, in the work session if we can.
And just to clarify for everyone, maybe in the audience, and maybe even some staff, some of our board that know our historical building was hit by lightning the other day. And of course, that's where the hook to all of our front lines and I T and the cable. So they burn up everything. The door locks. So we just had a big mess. The phones still, they have fixed the phones. Yeah, the phones are still out. So I just wanted to let everybody know. You need to reach the county and send an email because the phone lines are down. The locks are broken. The, you still haven't got the video or haven't been able to see the video. We're going to try to share today. We're going to see if we got to see when it hit the building. We heard that, that particular portion of I T is still down, but. Anyway, just let it lay out.
I think we're fine through email and calling on cell phones. At least we do have the cell phones to call and talk to people.
So just let anybody in the audience, reach out to board supervisors, reach out to planning, we can get emails out or whatever. If you have questions for the meantime. And I guess we were invited over to staff and special committee reports. That's what we just did and told us about. I guess we'll work right into work session matters now.
Then we did try to put this into a PowerPoint, um, to kind of bullet, um, the main changes here. So most of what we're looking at is, um, the minimum site areas and dimensional regulations of these district boundaries. Uh, change to building exteriors and the T C O. The use matrix, zoning definitions, daycare centers, short-term business rentals, um, bumpers, zoning districts, minor subdivisions, and ordinance for we're reviewing the order to the C P, resetting a preliminary site family requirements. So our first one is the minimum is under eighty-six, uh, dash one ten. The minimum lot area for a family subdivision shall be three acres. But it's not clear that the parent parcel must remain five acres in the east. So we just included that the parent parcel shall be no less than five acres.
And Sherry, I know it's popped up a couple of times since we started this. Um, and we're going to have to discuss this probably at a workshop, work session. But is how often someone can do a family subdivision? Because that's unclear in the ordinance. So I think we need to have that discussion so that when we do, and we connect this, it's, it's detailed.
That's different. That they can now. Well, it was, it used to be each one.
It's one.
One.
It, it listed it. Um, and I did start looking into the code of Virginia. Uh, I might need, need to talk to, um, the attorney about it so that's to see if there's any way to get that, that that one time, especially after so many years. But it does say one time per family member. So.
The way I read it, it said one division per family member, which could be interpreted as if you do a family division, each family can only get one forced.
Correct.
And that's the way a lot of the public is interpreting it. So I think we need to just have some further discussion and decide as a group how we want that. Because again, if someone does a family division right now, they have to own it for five years. The recipient has to hold it an additional three. But in most counties, all the ones that I know of, after that period, they can do another family subdivision. They're not limited to just one, one in a lifetime. Because people move and do different things. So again, I don't have an opinion on one or the other. I'm just saying we need to address it. Because I know you've been faced with it a couple of times.
I know.
Now that you say it, when you just read it, I took it a different way just then. I would think, like I said, mothers and fathers had a division for their son. And let's say they have two other sons later. If they only did it, could do it once, then the other two sons wouldn't be able to get it. So I would think that would be one time for a family member, which would be sometimes very concerned, but like maybe it's for the, for the parcel.
It has, it has come up on several occasions where somebody has done it years ago. And they have other property elsewhere and they want to build another house, you know? Maybe they've outgrown the other house and they want to build a bigger house or.
And they want to take their family knows with them and do it again. And again, the whole idea of the eight years was to deter from use, being used to circumvent anyway. So I, I, I don't think we have a lot of it going on. And I don't think it's being abused, not that I know of. You would know better than that.
Since I've been here, I'm only going to not have it one time where they held that link of time and then they just hold it all. That is something that we grew up and knew we do.
And they, just again, it'll be a, a whole conversation, but the three acre parcel that's cut off and goes to a family member of the parent track can still be solved.
Yep.
There is no holy period on that. So we need to put brokerage for that. Yeah. I mean, that's the way it's intended. Anyway, I just think it's kind of, we could spell it out a little better.
Anybody else have anything to add to that? All right. So the, the next thing is modifications to lot area regulations. And this has come up a couple of times. And this is currently what is in the ordinance. Um, under one fifteen, the side yards that was allowing unenclosed porches and platforms and terraces that were uncovered to encroach into the side yard, um, setback six feet. Uh, with a rear, they could, uh, do fire escape stairways, bathrooms, fire towers, chimneys. Um, they could go not more than five feet. And on the next one. So this is what is proposed is terrace and steps, chimneys, open, unenclosed porches, platforms, or paved terraces not covered by roots or canopy and which do not extend above the level of the first floor of the building, may extend or project into the required front side or rear, and then the rear just won't care, but rear yard step back not more than six feet, provided that no such protection, maybe closer than three feet to the front property line and ten feet to any side of their property line. And then to add mechanical equipment may reject the required side or rear yard, provided that they be no closer than three feet to any side of their property line. So it gives somebody an opportunity where you have to have a minimum of a three by three landing to get it a little bit bigger, especially somebody that wants to be able to walk out easily and then go down steps. Gives them that opportunity not to go down the setback, especially if they're limited on, you know, their setbacks already. It's not going to come up very often, but at, at times it does. So it just gives them the opportunity to put a bigger stoop out there if they need one.
If I could just interject, maybe I'm the only one flipping through. Was that, was that in our packet?
It may not. It's something that has come up and.
Wait, I don't remember seeing that one.
Remember we talked about it or not.
Okay, no problem. I was just, I didn't remember seeing those, so.
Guess the personal was there, eight, six, one, ten.
Right.
This one in the number four, wasn't it?
Yeah, it did cover some of it in the, some of it was covered in the side and some of it was covered in the rear. So we kind of just took that out and, and put it where it could go into the front side or rear.
I guess, did you send us an email these?
I can. We have.
Seen, things, what she read since we didn't have other things.
No, actually, Sherry and I have had some conversations about this. And basically, when you have, let's say, a seventy-five foot setback from the edge of the easement, we're saying if a house has a, a covered porch on the front, then the face of the porch has to meet the seventy-five feet, but the steps do not. And the reason in behind that is because depending on the elevation of the foundation dictates how far out the steps go. So somebody that had a two-foot foundation and somebody had a four-foot, the steps could potentially project into that seventy-five foot setback area. So if you just, like most counties, use the, the covered area, the, the front face of it, then the steps can encroach no more than six feet.
So if I can ask a question, Mr. Chairman. So Sherry, how often have these, the eighty-six, one twelve and one thirteen come up as far as concerns recently?
They don't come up very often, but they have come up from time to time. And it does limit somebody from putting something out there. Um, and it has come up with handicap ramps. And of course, you know, they have to have a handicap ramp to get in their house. So we have always done an administrative waiver to, to help get the person in, but, uh, like Mr. Callum said, if you've got eight steps to get into your house, you're going to want a landing, you're going to want four steps. Especially somebody that's older, another landing, another four steps. You're not going to want to take a whole, you know, s- straight eight steps without two landings. And it brings it out. But anyhow, which way do you go?
Right. I don't have. So I don't really have a concern that we're bringing those up now, but I do know that as we've been going through the ordinances, we've been trying to pick and choose the things that are the most concerned for us to try to get addressed and pushed into a public hearing. I don't, I just don't want to see us continue to add a whole bunch more little things that are going to continue or possibly deter us from getting to the main focus of um, where we're trying to get with the updates to the ordinances.
I think this is probably it, after we review the, um, the side stuff for, um, the resentments and C U B, um, that a lot of this is stuff that we have discussed. Um, or changes that we really need to make because of a lot of inquiries about it. Would anybody have any?
We need some copies of what y'all were discussing while I was on. So I have the total discussion. Are you talking about?
Hey, did you, you should have gotten something from the last month.
I'm just looking, thinking, I didn't see that.
Well, this one, um, was not in that last month's packet, but I will go ahead and email a copy of this to everybody. And if you can't get email, let us know. And we'll get one made for you. So the next thing is the boundaries. Um, and this is one we had talked about before, but we have pictures as time. Um, the center line shall be measured from the solid yellow line dividing the two lane roads and marking the left edge of the divided highways. So with this, you see on three sixty, the interior solid line is yellow. And so that's where we would take that measurement from. Okay.
But you're wasting all the potter in, in the middle. You know, that was a wide away easement. Company people flopped it and they're losing the footage to the center of that between the two lanes.
Well, this is, um, measuring for the, the transportation.
I know what it's measured for.
Seven hundred and fifty feet for three sixty.
And they lose an extra eight to ten feet. You know what I mean? You're pushing them back further and further and three sixty already are wide, wide away. Who wants to do that?
So you think we should measure?
It should go some other way.
And we already discussed that.
Okay. And that's the same problem you had with the, we was talking about those commons that has two or three different widths, if they always work from the center.
Well, it does work though on the small road. It doesn't, doesn't work like that on the highway. It is the center line on the small road.
Yeah.
This, since there's a median, then I remember.
If actually not the center line on the secondary, it's the edge of the easement.
Yeah.
That's what can vary from thirty-five to forty to fifty.
And that's the thing, it goes center line.
If we took the center line of the secondary roads, we already have agreed to the center line of thirty. And, and I never agreed with this. I agree with Mr. Williams on this. If you take the center line of the four lanes, that's fair to everybody.
Right. That's what I think. I thought in the beginning we went convoluted. It said the middle of the two yellow lines. We were going from that.
If you go to the middle of the two yellows, it's a yellow down, a yellow down. The middle should be where it did you. That's what we blame.
That's what we thought.
I think the reason we, we had it the way that the current language is, is because turn lanes and things like that.
It varies.
Well, yeah.
That center runs through the middle. That's a turn lane down. They didn't move the center. They just put a turn lane in there, huge part of that space.
And that turn in lane is only going to be seventy-five at a, a building. You're not going to, you're not just not going to run into that. That thirty, three sixty and all your secondary roads carry variable widths. So the only way to keep it uniform is to use the center line of everything.
I've, I've been as long as it's because I know that's already got a bunch of, we would have done my law on common. I.
Fifty. So you could have three parcels. One could be a fifteen foot difference. One could be a ten foot difference. You know, it, it's better just to, because that commons road, even where it's fifty foot, the center of the road is basically the center of the easement. That just keeps it uniform throughout the county. My opinion.
How does the current language read on that? Not, not what we're going to change it to, but the, the current ordinance.
Um, the current ordinance, um, you can go back. It just says route three sixty. Properties with Bruncha Jones Highway three sixty for its entire length through the county and extending seven hundred and fifty feet on either side from the center line of such highway or to the depth of the property, whichever is less. And route thirty, properties with Bruncha Jones State Highway thirty for its entire length through the county and extending five hundred feet on either side from the center line of State Highway thirty or to the depth of the property, whichever is less. Um, so what brought this up is nobody really knowing exactly where to measure from. Um, so that's why we had, uh, come up with the, the measurement from the yellow line on the inside because there was a problem trying to, to measure the center of median because of turn lanes and so forth. And to get it from there. Um.
But if you take the center of the two yellow lines, that's your center.
That's right. And they can do that in, but they won't be fighting traffic like you're upside.
The ditch might not always hit dead center, but if you say the dead center of the two yellow lines, that heats up throughout the county.
Okay. And then we have thirty, which I have pictures of.
Thirty, we already said the center line.
Yeah. So, um, all the way down, you'll have the, the yellow in the center.
But no, you don't because they have, just like, like that, you have two lanes on the right, one on the left. The summer that load doesn't follow the yellow line.
V I'd say, I mean, V I has to show, V I doesn't use yellow lines.
No, they don't follow the way.
That's what I'm saying. That's the sense of pavement, not have to do with lines.
But you know, common sense would tell you here that the two lanes to the right, the white line would be the center. That they're the main two lanes.
Yeah, that's not the center line of the road. Metal side, I mean, yeah. It's halfway.
That's a turn lane in the middle.
Yeah.
So you gotta go to some of that turn lane to be. That's a turn lane, put in the middle of two lanes. And stuff like that, we have to watch out for. We need to find a perfect summer. Because I know often my end of the county, it's fifty-five foot from the center line to the edge of the white line. Because I know often my end of the county, it's fifty-five foot from the center line to the edge of the white line. And I've seen people build houses too close and get in trouble with apartments. There needs to be something everybody can understand.
And this is specific to thirty and three sixty. Talking about the TCO right now. Any other suggestions on?
Well, Mr. Mr. Moskowski one time on the meeting said, let's not create a problem where there is a problem, where there isn't a problem. Really, when you talk of this, we're not talking about a building setback, we're talking about a TCO. Just if they have to have a brick front or not.
At seven fifty and five hundred feet.
Right. So I mean, we're we're seven hundred and fifty feet, it is a long ways, and it creates problems like Shannon Road. We talked about that morning, seven fifty across Shannon Road. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be dealing with it not only on Sharon Road, but we're gonna be dealing with it on Venter Road, as those properties will develop as well. Kelly Kelly Main is another one right there, so.
Old footpath up my way.
Old footpath is another one, so there there are several that we're gonna run into. But as far as the TCO, we 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 almost never run into any issues with the seven hundred and fifty feet.
And when did we go the entire week throughout thirty? I thought it always went five miles up and five miles back.
It's been the entire length since I've been here, so.
Yeah, that was done with the previous county administrators' guidance. Was was the recommendation to be the full length of Route thirty, which is, yeah.
I mean, I I think at some point in time, we have to, like Mr. Williams said, look at it, you know, should it be the whole length? And again, seven hundred and fifty feet on one three sixty creates some issues. Seven hundred and fifty feet, in my opinion, is 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 deep.
Five hundred feet on thirty is a whole lot of issues.
So can we make that a a work session, because I mean, it's gonna be some discussion.
Just about the that you said that?
Yeah.
How about this particular part, do y'all agree to take out this all the red, because it doesn't seem to make it any clearer?
I mean, it really needs to be, if there's, if it's not a divided highway, it's the center of the road.
Yeah, like that one, it would be the center line of the two outside white lines.
That's assuming that all three lanes are uniform. With, so you really need to measure between the two outside solid white lines and then take the middle of that.
And and you're you're only gonna run into this a couple times, I mean, it's only one or two of those now in the county. So again, let's let's not make it too complicated, we have to follow the same with the building setbacks, is it gonna be from the edge of the easement or the center line? I I'm back to it should be the center line that keeps everything uniform.
Yeah.
May I ask a question of the planning commission? This is coming from someone that has to enforce regulations. Why are we looking at the, if you have a district, normally it's a certain area, and we're discussing feet. So if you want a TCO district, maybe we should be looking at saying if the property fronts on this, on three sixty, if it's if it's commercial property, if it's this or if it's that, why are we looking at saying if it's from the center line, if it's this many feet back? Maybe we need to think of it from a different perspective. From the front property line? If it's, if the, if the building itself fronts three sixty, if it's facing three sixty, maybe you just need to kind of look at it from a different perspective.
Well, if it's if it's facing three sixty, we still have to be able to tell someone, you have to be seventy-five feet off of some point.
Right.
And we have to determine what that point is. Right now, it's really no one knows along three sixty. What we do know, it's off the edge of the easement right now.
To the property line or the property line.
But but that variable width is what's causing problems, because it can change by twenty, thirty feet. So if we use the center of the four lanes, of this, or between the two yellow lines, I think that's about as exact as we're gonna get.
But you're talking about two different things, you're talking about setbacks and you're talking about the TCO district.
But you both, you have to know where to fall both.
Well, you know, you're, you know your property lines, because you've got your plaques to say, this is where your property lines are. This is where your your front, your sides, and your rear are, you're establishing where the TCO district is.
But your property line that fronts on three sixty is variable, depending on how wide easements, that changes.
For each in parcel, it's gonna change.
Well, that, where you have variable widths, that's what we're saying, can we clean that up a little bit and make it more uniform throughout the county? And just say, you know, and we can increase the setback, if we don't like the setback, but you know, it's right now, I could have a piece of property next door to Mr. Sluter, and I could have a fifty-foot wide easement, and he could have a thirty-five-foot wide easement, and we could have a fifteen-foot difference where his property could be sitting closer than mine because of the variable width created by V dot.
Yeah, so you're wideaway easement, now we're talking about wideaway easement for V dots, so now you're talking about three different things.
I'm I'm still talking about the same thing. When you measure your TCO or you measure your setback, you've got to know where to measure from.
But why are we, I guess my question is, why are we measuring the seven hundred and fifty feet back instead of establishing a district? I'm just trying to get y'all to think in a different perspective.
If if your perspective is, we say the seven hundred and fifty feet is too much and we need to, for a certain district, make it five hundred feet or four hundred feet.
I'm saying, don't think of feet, don't think of feet. Think of saying, if you're saying the whole TCO district is the three sixty corridor, why are we saying it has to be seven hundred and fifty feet back? Why wouldn't we say maybe it's, it'd be one properties, it'd be two properties? Those are your ones that we're gonna look at, why are we saying it's a matter of feet coming back?
I got, I got a good one.
Yeah.
If you own three hundred acres on three sixty, and you wanna build in the back of, you're not on the TCO.
You may not think.
Okay, right now, people are trying to build far enough off of three sixty to be out of the TCO because of course so much for their business to do it.
Actually, if you read the TCO, if your property fronts on three sixty, you have to adhere to the TCO, whether you breathe seven hundred and fifty feet or not.
I think after you get out of it, seven fifty, you're you're out of the TCO.
There's additional language in there that says if your property fronts on three sixty.
You wanna try to come up with some verbiage for this for the work session?
I wanna get y'all to think in different terms, that's all.
So if I can ask the question, Sherry, we've we've already asked staff to go back over this multiple times, gentlemen. So we really need to kind of come up with what we're asking them to do. I know we had V dot's definition, and that was still too complicated. That that even though I'm sure that's an accurate definition, it doesn't, the language doesn't really to be understandable enough for anybody that's looking at an ordinance. Did we ask other counties, because at this point, we've talked about it so many times?
I went through Mina Code and looked, and I really didn't find any language that would help us with this.
So how do y'all want to proceed in asking them what type of language we're looking for them to write up for us?
I I say whether it be a setback to build a property or it be measuring how far back, if you're in the TCO or not, we pick the center line. That's the most uniform way to do it, county wide, whether it be secondary road, Route thirty, or Route three sixty.
But what about not even measuring from the center of the road? And anything within seventy feet of the front property line? Be in the TCO, and then after that, it would be outside. And then just kind of look at what the average is when it's seven hundred and fifty feet in the center of the road, how far back it normally is. And go that route. Not be a building setback, but a TCO setback, anything, and I'm just gonna use as an example, anything within a hundred and fifty feet of the front property line is in the TCO. And outside of that hundred and fifty feet, it's out of the TCO.
But that that front property line is what changes with the variable widths, because V dot, when when I bring a plan into you, V dot says you have to dedicate me ten feet. Well, Mr. Sluter, his piece of property may be already existing, so he doesn't have to to give V dot that ten feet. So he's got a ten, fifteen, twenty-foot difference from what I have. I'm just saying, if we took the the center line, and we're talking about two different things, one for your building setback. You say I have to be seventy-five feet off the road, off the setback.
Off the front property line.
Right. So if we said center line of the road, that keeps it uniform throughout the county. When you go to build a commercial building, the same thing, we say the center of the four lanes, the center of the two yellow lines, if it's a seventy-five-foot or a hundred-foot setback for for a building, then you measure from the center of those four lines, back whatever the setback is, a hundred feet, and that's where you start your building. Now, the second part of that is whether you fall within the TCO, anything you build seven hundred and fifty feet or less is gonna fall in within the TCO, and over Route thirty's fine line.
The language is, properties with frontage on US three sixty for its entire length through the county and extending seven hundred and fifty feet on either side from the center line of such highway, or to the depth of the property whichever is less.
That's how it reads.
So if you own a five hundred-foot property, you guys got the property behind you, he doesn't have to abide by that. But you just said, because it's a different block. And talking about your setback, like you said, on three sixty, that's a real wide wideaway, so it needs more than a seventy-five-foot setback. That makes three sixty the hundred and fifty foot.
Yeah, seventy-five feet is is for your residential and your secondary.
Yeah.
I don't know what the commercial is right off, but it probably is a hundred and fifty.
So what if I come up with some wording and email it to you all? And to come back with some comments, so we have it pretty much in agreement before our next work session, because I would like to have everything done so we can give it to the board prior to the work session, so they have a chance to to take a look at this.
What's the date of that work session again?
Uh, technically, it's the twenty-first of August.
I could make a suggestion, Sherry, because I, considering with the panel of the planning commission as it is, and that we've gone through this so many times, when we get to the joint work session, I think you might need to have several options, options already spelled out that the board and the planning commission can review. Instead of us all sitting there trying to guess now how we're gonna change that. Because I think that this is still gonna be something up for for discussion. That that's just my suggestion, I don't know how the rest of y'all feel.
Moving right on.
Pictures here. Okay, so I know we talked about the changes to the building exteriors and the DCO. I kind of felt like y'all thought it was a bit much that what we had before. So I tried to condense and take some of it out. So what I came up with is the step character that, um, gallon home, bricks, uh, decorative block, split face, block, neutral color, cementous siding and other materials with similar texture and appearance are considered appropriate to the county character and shall be provided on the main building facades. Nationally recognized and or trademarked colors, whether those pictures or other similar type features may be permitted on the building, signs, awnings, or other complimentary architectural features with the approval of the Director of Planning. Vinyl siding, flat or corrugated metal and concrete blocks shall not be used for exterior siding material on any building, except that vinyl siding may be used as trim material. Exterior covering material shall extend to the ground, except that when a solid brick or basinry perimeter foundation is used, exterior covering material may not extend to the top of the foundation. Not less than sixteen percent of total area of any facade visible from a public right-of-way excluding work areas shall consist of windows and doors. We talked about the bays, that's the bays out, because we were using.
Fixants.
Um, and then mechanical equipment, including job board, air compressors, and other fixed operating chairs shall either be screened from view with either a solid wall, solid fence, or landscaping or located so that such items are not visible from the public right-of-way. Utility meters above ground tanks, satellite dishes, antennas, et cetera, shall be similarly untreated. Roof mounted with chemical equipment shall be opaquely screened from view at grade by period walls or other solar structures that reflect the architecture of the building. And then we talk about the fencing along the public right-of-way is discouraged, but if used, that fencing shall be landscaped to minimize visibility from the public right-of-way or via a style which is harmonious with the world, our agricultural and historical territory of the county. Chain link fences shall be prohibited. Pedestrian way, sidewalk, that less than five feet of clear and unimpeded areas shall be provided across a frontage of property in all areas. I know that was kind of a subject there, all pedestrian ways must join one another or connect. And then I have no small scale, medium scale, or utility scale solar facilities shown in the minute in the transportation corner of LA District.
So you're saying they can't have solar on the roof of a business in the overland?
These are your solar facility, your solar farms.
You said small scale, small scale could be going home on the roof.
We can change it to.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm just filling out what you're saying.
So we can put something about.
I think we need to define what a solar facility is, because I wouldn't really say that a solar panel on a house is a solar facility.
Yeah, and we do have definitions.
And your best example of it is the model house that Kennington run.
Yeah.
Has the standalone solar panels all to the right of it.
And we we do have.
So we're saying no solar panels within seven hundred and fifty feet of three sixty.
Well, what we, what we're, we've had some things about and we've gotten fires about, are putting solar farms.
So no solar farms within, in the TCO.
In the, in the, or, and I've got it in another location also, so it's not on three sixty or forty.
Because I found they're the one that's set back so far, it's back on their TCO, and all those old crappy houses are always there. So I think.
That tree box was a dying.
Oh, I know, because they don't, just like us, they can't, they said they got a lot of money, they just don't. Yeah, like you said, the model one isn't considered a solar farm, yes, it's just it's not really a home either.
So we have, in our definitions, we have solar facility group. Means a system consisting of solar panels, modules, accessory structures, and related equipment that collect solar energy and converts it into heat and electricity, which solar panels are located on the roof of a residential dwelling unit. Small scale, it generates less than fifteen kilowatts, but it is, I mean, it's like the one behind the school, the no school, that's considered a small scale because of the wattage. And then we have utility scale. And then we have medium scale.
And the one behind the school, and they put that on that only five hundred feet?
There be.
No, the ones that said that TCO goes all the way up down thirty. Five hundred feet, getting awful close on that thing.
I think from the back of that, it's definitely right there. Yeah. And it drops down.
I hate to see you giving stuff.
No, that that uh that fell under the size and and so forth. They did not even have to get the C P P process on that one. So the next thing under eighty six one forty is to change short term business rentals and the A C district from being. Permitted by right to requiring approval of a conditional use permit. So we allow them in the R R and R one, but we require a C P P. Currently, but in the A C district, they're terminated by rights. That way it would give you and the board a chance to review all the applications that are coming in. Um and be able to approve them with conditions if they're needed.
If you have a rental property, the businesses going in, the board has approved every business that comes in that property.
It's an Airbnb or VRBOs. Where they rent them uh by the night, by the weekend.
Okay, so we didn't like somebody wants to make some store on the property is.
No, these these are like the Airbnbs that are in a becoming a.
A wheelchair.
We've bought, we've actually had a few come in and uh. Oh, one that that came in, we've had a lot of complaints. And what says it would give you the option to, you know, you know, recommend approval, denial, or approval with conditions.
So, excuse me, Sheri, uh forgive me for interrupting again. But the presentation that you're showing on the screen wasn't a part of our package and I'm. Finding that there's a couple more of these that you're talking about tonight that weren't. In what was provided to us too. So again, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, but we haven't really had time to.
We did discuss the uh the short term report.
Right, it just wasn't in part of what we were in the package that we got for this meeting.
Well, we will make sure that you get a copy of the PowerPoint.
Please, I I again, I know we've talked about it before where I brought my other notes from last month, etcetera. I just. Again, I I would like to see all of that that you're reviewing.
So what I was hoping that we could do that after we kind of narrow down things with the sense. Because I know we've been sending out, giving stuff out at the meetings and so forth, and it's a number of things and there've been changes. To try to narrow it down and do one new packet with everything prior to presenting it to the board. Um, the other thing, we we did discuss this, but uh we, under the business license and other requirements. Uh take out the license, maybe revoked if more than three is stampated. Complaints are received within one year. Um and change to replication is for a minimum of one year, but may be permanent at the discretion of the county. An annual renewal application and fee of seventy five dollars is required. The planning department has received valid complaints within the year. A short term rental permit may not be renewed. And the applicant must reapply for a conditional use permit. The commission revenue will not renew the business license until they receive their annual renewal permit.
So any business you don't like, just complain three times and they're out.
Well, it has to be, you know. Yeah, we will check it out. We don't just take somebody's. We do have to check it out.
That was mainly came about because of the Airbnb property.
Well, that one and then we we have. Uh so one thing we have not done and uh is the industrial, we went from. But they changed it from M to I, which is the same use industrial. But um. You know, we talked about the I one, the I two, the I three, but we never really had a. Good definition for it. Uh we've given definitions at the whole times. And this is something uh we want to try to do it later, we can, but um came up, came up with three of them. Uh for I one light industrial is intended to provide land for a variety of commercial uses. And then your factoring, fabricating, and warehousing activities that only produce minimal odors. Noise and somewhere adverse impacts on nearby lands. To ensure minimal adverse impacts, many industrial activities are only allowed if conducted within enclosed buildings. Allowed uses include light manufacturing, laboratories, warehouses, and recycling. And the I two is intended to provide land for a variety of commercial uses in manufacturing, fabricating. Warehousing activities that have the potential to produce low to moderate levels of odor, noise, and. Similar adverse impacts on nearby lands. To minimize adverse impacts on adjacent lands, many uses are allowed only if they are located a minimum distance from adjacent. Residential zoning district allowed uses include manufacturing, laboratories, warehouses, and recycling. And our three for heavy industrial, it's intended to provide. Land that accommodate intense industrial development, does important to the county's second economy, but may adversely impact. Surrounded lands. To minimize adverse impacts on nearby lands, many uses are allowed only if they are located a minimum distance. Or adjacent residential zoning districts. Allowed uses include heavy manufacturing, large. Distribution warehouses and salvage operations, like just solar houses. Uh work lot or sports and recreation. So e- and even with that, then we have to look at the matrix. And see when you want these things permitted. Only for different uses, we we need to go down the the matrix.
If we were to make changes to the definitions as as it reads, how about a plot put in this thing you get through.
So right now we have industry light, industry medium, and industry heavy. Light means processing, manufacturing, compounding, assembly. Packaging, treatment, or fabrication of materials and products from processed or previously manufactured materials. Light industry is capable of operation in such a manner. As to control the external effects of the manufacturing process, such as smoke, noise, soup, dirt. Vibration, odor, and the light. Uses may include, but are not limited to, a machine shop. The manufacturing of uh barrel, electrical appliances, lint fire, equipment. Camera and photographic equipment, ceramic products, cosmetics, toiletries, business machines, paper products. But not the manufacturer of paper from Holwood. Uh music instruments, medical appliances, tools or hardware, plastic products. But not the processing of raw materials, pharmaceuticals, or optical goods, bicycles, any other products. Uh of a similar nature. And then we have industry medium. Means goods which are generally mass produced from raw materials on a large scale for the use of an. Assembly line or similar process, usually for sale or wholesale, to wholesale or for other. Industrial or manufacturing uses. Medium industry produces moderate external effects such as. Smoke, noise, soup, or vibration, odor, and the light. And industry heavy is manufactured with significant external effects. Or which pose significant risk due to the involvement of explosives, radioactive materials. Poison, pesticides, herbicides, or other hazardous material and manufacturing or other process. And we can leave that like it is, but we still need to go through the matrix that has not been done.
I'm glad I'm trying to run all the businesses we come to the county away, while we just trying to come up something the word up to.
Thank God, that's what uh Ms. Hite said a while ago. We've done a whole lot out there one time. This is going to require a lot of discussion. I mean, we know, we know the. Let's say the top uh main things that are you're dealing with every day right now. This this is coming and we need to address this, but we're not really doing anything right now.
So you are taking out on the second phase, phase two?
I I would say you prioritize, because it's, I mean, it's it's a lot here tonight. We're really starting to have it into it. I think we need to break it up into two groups and prioritize.
Top of them space two.
That would be my suggestion.
My thing that I would say is to make sure that any of these. Anything that we're going to put in place to make sure that it's not anything that we know upcoming. Projects that we need to have these things in place for um. Would be my only comment from I don't think this is anything that. Be of concern right now, but if you go back and review what's upcoming and think that it is needed, then please let us.
Alright, so the next one eighty six one eighty nine daycare center. Uh under religious assembly means a news providing regular organized religious worship and related incidentals. Um and it did uh said it said primary or secondary schools for daycare facilities. Uh so we added primary, secondary schools and daycare facilities shall be permitted with approval of a conditional use permit. That will allow the trunners to have what needed daycare. And preschool programs. Um and this may be something we we talked about it a little bit. Uh do you have something in order? Um for the offering and the landscaping, do we want to move back to phase two? I mean, we have something in there now, but I know we wanted it a little more detailed.
So what what would we use to say the Starbucks down in there?
Uh they have one side that's DCO, so we'll have to have uh the landscape buffer along the front.
That's really the the first one we're going to be faced with.
A while.
In a while.
Yeah, and same thing with Duncan. I mean, they'll have a project along the um three sixty that. They're going to have to put, you know, landscaping there as well.
Adhere to what we already have in the ones, which is pretty good.
You don't want it too heavy along your borders and obstruct. Uh you know, visual.
For the turn business.
That, but I mean, it's a safety aspect as well. Okay, so um definitions, we talked about one waterfront. So we have frontage lot waterfront. Means the front yard of a waterfront lot is a yard that faces the shoreline. If more than one yard faces the shoreline, then rear yard is the one that provides access to the road. And the front yard is determined accordingly.
So basically, no way, no matter what way the house is really built, the face, the roof. The yard facing the water is the water plant.
That would be considered the lot frontage if you're on the water. This it came up, we had some people come before the planning commission with concerns about this and. Uh this is one reason why it was addressed.
You don't want to build your house with the front to the river, then you can never build anything in the back, because that's considered the front.
Yeah.
And you also have.
Not no people that got you, but behind them.
And you also have the Ches Bay that's usually involved when there's waterfront. So you're prohibited from building it on the roadside anyway.
Most most people that build on the waterfront are going to hit right at the edge of the RPA. So you call that the front yard, because anything that they build, they're going to want to build in what we're now calling the backyard.
Which is on the street side and everybody will lie down and look down on it.
But I mean, really, ninety nine point nine percent of people are going to build right at the hundred foot RPA mark. So if we're going to allow them to have sheds or any kind of outbuildings, we have to allow it in between the house and the street. Although, and the the examples we use like Woodbury Road down here. Had the houses now have garages in between the road and the house. So if we didn't change it, the other half, it didn't happen, they would be excluded from ever adding any type of outbuildings. So we we talked about this one quite a bit, and that kind of seemed to be the. The best resolution.
Everybody else that sees that said, well, actually, they built that and nobody else get. We changed in the standard.
We did change it for others too, Mr. Williams. There there are provisions now in the code for others that are not waterfront, that allows them to.
I've always heard people fighting over because they was trying to get one in that one.
Yeah, we we did.
Nothing to have a backyard.
Um, one thing that was not previously, but this came in um. At uh our county attorney's, our recommendation, you know, we've had a couple of carriage home. Uh requests come through, which a carriage home is technically like a townhouse type of thing. But we have nothing in the ordinance that specifies carriage home. So under the townhouse development, I just put this includes carriage homes. And condominium structures that are single family homes that share walls with neighboring units. Just added it so we do have the carriage homes covered under this.
And that won't be in time for the tendings in project.
It's still, I mean, it's treated the same way, but it just that garbage is not in there that says carriage homes. Or condominium structures, so it was recommended that we put some garbage in there just to.
But the only difference between a condo and a townhouse is the form of ownership. And they still have adjoining wall, shared wall. It's basically the same stuff. It's just a form of ownership.
And then under indoor facilities, I just have solar facility should not be located on Route thirty, King William Road or. Three sixty Richmond, Tampa, Henneck Highway, or in the transportation corner of the district.
So we should not be located on Route thirty.
King William Road or Route three sixty Richmond, Tampa, Henneck Highway.
Isn't that kind of contradictory? We said it forward long as they were outside of the T C O.
Yeah.
So you take Mr. Green was example of. I mean, that's a little conflicting.
We can just scratch it if you want.
I say that that probably needs to come out. We just stick to the.
So we're getting close to here. Uh section eighty six four fifty four minor subdivisions. Uh we scratched there, there should be only one access to an adjacent primary or secondary highway by New Street. And no lot shall have direct access to an existing primary or secondary highway. And we've got this show willing. Uh that's a typo. One access to an adjacent primary highway. There should be only one access to a secondary highway or a shared driveway for every two lots that find in second building highway. The shared access should be provided on a fifty foot wide easement extending on the public road. To cover all lots within the subdivision, and there shall be an agreement with its agreement for each lot in the subdivision.
So then no more small subdivisions that all buy and have a lot on the same one about thirty, you're saying?
Well, before the ordinance, they weren't allowed on thirty or three sixty. The new ordinance allows them. The new ordinance allows them, but.
With one shared entrance.
They have one entrance on thirty or three sixty, so they, they don't have multiple entrances. Under the old ordinance on your secondary roads, if you had a four lot minor, you would have a driveway for each lot.
Now every two lots has to share. Cut your driveways down by fifty percent.
Yeah. The way that the new ordinance for you to say, you have one lane, but that's not always an option because sometimes there's a minor that's done, it's only two lots. Um, or it could be done both direct, both ways, but this allows two lots to share one driveway if they want to. So it doesn't have a four driveways, you could have two driveways or you could have one lane to serve all four lots. And I'll just use those as an example.
Either way, it was designed to cut the entrances down by at least fifty percent. Yes, it is there should be a road maintenance agreement for each lot, some of it, I mean, that it's just not able to enforce because like the road maintenance agreement, nobody ever pays, it's just like all the rest of them. We can't police it. So the county is not responsible for enforcing private agreements. So it shouldn't even be in there.
That was, that was recommended for, so, yeah, yeah. When our decisions were. But I can certainly take it out.
Like I said, it's nobody forces it, nobody pays once they buy it. Like the, I mean, if you just bought the house next door, it didn't even know it had a road agreement. What is going to create by default is if, if there's two houses on one driveway, the lender are going to require a road maintenance agreement. So then it's up to them to enforce it, not the county.
There's usually something in the D, under the, the exhibit on the back of the D. What comes into a problem is when, you know, there's a, an agreement that each person on the lane pays so much into, uh, then that's where I think a lot of people have problems.
Well, you have to get into, when you develop two or four or whatever, somebody within that two or four has to accept the responsibility of keeping and checking account on collecting money, but it just turns out. So I say that the private restrictions cover that.
Scratch it out.
That would be my.
But, well.
But then if they go, oh, we had trouble when they go to the bank, they put off the head ready and then we did. We can't force it, but we can save them from having to knock them out when they try to find us.
So we put it in there. We just, we don't enforce it, but it's in there.
And then it's already there for.
I'm okay with that.
So leave it.
Yeah, there you go. Easy enough.
Do you think the lenders are going to acquire that or is that just a best practice for me?
No, yeah, every lender I deal with, if there's two houses on one road, they have a road maintenance agreement. But like Mr. Williams said, if we just, when we submit a plat for approval, you already have that language in there. Then it's that step's already taken care. We're not, the county cannot enforce private restrictions. But at least the steps already taken, we know it's in there and if it, if it were to come down, we can say, look, it's in here that you have a road maintenance agreement. You need to go back and, and fight it yourself. It's not a county fight. And as I said, the neighbors, we had one of the lender didn't even know, they didn't require them to prove, prove of it. They didn't even know we had it. Was that the last time?
Um, for that, I mean, we do have the the chain or just to review, unless y'all want to set up a work session and do, you've got the paperwork in front of you. We can certainly, um, get a few dates from the partners and see what works for everybody and how they have a work session.
Is it, is it possible, I mean, because a work session is going to be pretty detailed or maybe to have it a little earlier than seven o'clock. So everyone is not getting into the night hours and, I mean, even an extra hour at six o'clock. Just a suggestion, but and then maybe interfere with some people's work schedule, not apologize when it does, but. That's the reason I had before, like it's something like this. And we plan a work session thirty, sixty days out, you know, and everybody has time to plan for it to, to do it a little earlier.
Or that work for some of you that are still working and not retired.
I would just, I would definitely need enough advance notice to, to know whether I could accommodate something earlier. I mean, maybe six thirty, but six o'clock, I would definitely leave some advance.
I think the six thirty.
Six thirty.
We got thirty minutes.
So we will go ahead and try to clean this up. We get the verbiage with a whole section of the ordinance. Um, is there anything else that you want us to put in there for review at the work session? Anything else that we can?
Yeah, work sessions have to be in two, maybe one other day we are back and senses.
That's why she said she has.
We'll have to see what's available.
And does that, does that have to be advertised anywhere? How, how does?
It doesn't have to be advertised in the paper, but it does have to be advertised.
So it's on the county website in enough time, right? To meet the.
Yeah, there are so many days. But we can, we can advertise that they are.
So I doubt anybody will steal on Friday, so Monday through Thursday. Hours soon.
So the next question then. So back to our goal is to have all of this together, but we'll go to the joint work session with the board supervisors. So keep in mind what we're talking about is, um, within the next couple of, you know, next four to five weeks because we need to have all of that ironed out in enough time for the staff to put it all together. Doing that joint.
And we need to get it to them ahead of time as well. So they have time to take a look at. So if they all.
And that's all, get everybody scheduled to go.
Oh, no, the joint meeting is already scheduled for the twenty-third.
Scheduled for the twenty-first, I think. That's your next meeting there. Make sure it's.
That was the first of all.
Right.
Didn't we go for something other board that we wanted to change?
But, um, we'll try to email this. Did email work? Okay. For everybody? Messed up yet?
Yeah, there's still.
Uh, we'll try to email this stuff out. If you do have problems getting the email, please let us know. We'll get Andy to drop it off. Poor Andy, we tried him to work doing a little bit of everything. Um, but yeah, so anything that you could think of, or if you get it and you say, no, we need to change this or let's do it a different way, let us know so we can have it all ready and in time for it all for the session.
So if you can email it to us tomorrow or Thursday, right? Today's Tuesday by Thursday. And then I think we need to have, I, I think there needs to be an established date to have those comments back to you for you to still be able to take that and move forward with it before we go into a date of a work session. Um, because we've been, most of us here have been talking about these for a long time. And we just keep changing directions when we get in front of Mrs. Graham here at these final minutes. It's really getting confusing for her and for all of us as well. Um, one thing that I'd also like to ask is whenever we move forward with, um, if we can keep them in order. Um, because I'm just, I'm finding myself flipping around and I think you have your presentation kept in order tonight. Um, but anything that we do before we go to the joint session, just keep them in order because I'm going to need to go back through some of my notes and try to get that back together to be able to follow along with it would be of help to me.
I know we talked about phase two. I definitely want to get us through these changes before we take on anything else, but I, I would like to, um, revisit the resuming of some parcels along three sixty. Um, I know that one of the meetings said we were going to wait for the EDA director, but I'm not sure when that's going to happen. Uh, but I, you know, we need to look at our comp plan and we need to start focusing on gearing toward things that's in our comp plan. And that is one of the things is to have, you know, parcels ready for, um, businesses and development that want to come in.
And the new persons, well, our, one of our goals for that new person was stating for them to do that. They went, offered it to two centers, they were going to do it. So they said it wasn't a good idea. So more was wondering something, it was a good idea to do that, but they said it was. We need to build up and like I said, it doesn't have to be like massive to go down the whole thing like from the same, but we know some people that know it, but let's go ahead and get them.
Yeah, we can, you know, and, and personally, let's get through this first.
Oh, yeah, that's like phase two.
Barbara's already got all the, the work done. So, you know, we can identify the individuals. Um, and get their input, have meetings specifically for that. Um, and just see what they have to say. And it's not really that many parcels along three sixty. It, it seems like it's a lot because, you know, the, the weight is on three sixty. But when you start looking at the list, it's really not that many. Um, another thing, I will not physically be here at our next meeting. I will be on vacation. Um, but Barbara and Christina will be here and I am going to try to report to, to be here through Zoom. Um, because everybody more, we have the Kennington.
It's a commissioner comments.
Um, well, first of all, we had a great attendance tonight. Um, we don't often have that. So thank you all for your time and coming out tonight. That's what we need the most in this county is to have more participation and get involvement from y'all and get your opinions for us to be able to make the decisions. So that's the main thing that I really want to say. Thank you for coming out. Please continue to keep following what we're doing and, and providing this input. That's the best way that we can make the decisions. You know, it is based on when y'all's input. So thank you so much for coming. Um, thanks to Mrs. Graham and staff again for all the work that y'all have done, um, to bring all of this to us. Um, I'm based off of one of the, um, citizen comments earlier. Um, I would really like to ask Mrs. Graham and staff, if there's a way for any, um, conditional use permits, et cetera, that if we're, if we table them or make a motion, um, for them to be tabled, that there be some type of way for the citizens to know when it's going to come back up. I don't know whether that requires sending another notification to the adjoining property owners. Um, but we definitely need to make sure that, um, when there are specific ones that are coming back up that would list those in, whether it's unfinished business, state business, whatever, um, where, whatever category we're going to put those down. I would like to make sure that those get specified when we're going to talk about them. Um, so the, the public does know, um, when it's coming back to our attention. I probably made some other notes that I wanted to bring up, but I can't think of it right now. So that's all I really had. So thank you very much.
Just to let you know too, we, you can have all of on the website where they can put one to the, the agenda and, and the packet. And Barbara usually has it on there when she has your packet down, she usually downloads everything. Um, but I also have a complaint about our signs that we post on the properties. So we are ordering larger signs, neon yellow with black writing. Somebody said that they do a lot of travel and when they see the signs that are just a bright yellow, it sticks out and they said the orange just kind of blends in. So we're hoping a little bit larger and a little bit brighter that that might draw attention to the site when people go by. So we'll see.
Well, I'd like to stop, I'm thanking everybody for coming out and the pleasure of being back on the planning commission. Been a long time trying to get updated on all this new stuff. It can take me a little time, but I'm working at it. But as we were talking about stuff on the website, is that the same website? We don't have the one application on yet.
That the old application has been taken off. We have done all.
Taking it off and we put the new in though.
We have not.
Okay. Cause I know that was a hot button last month.
That's what I have.
I just.
We have got all new applications for everything. Um, and we're, we're favoring it for the month.
And I still gotta get in touch with you to get some more information to get me up to total speed of everybody else, especially on this stuff we're working for work session.
Just let us know whatever you need, we'll pick out these for you.
Thank you.
My second, the comment so far, I'm sure, um, Mr. Williams, welcome to the planning commission. Um, thank you to Don Wagner for his service on it, uh, previously and, um, thank you everybody that showed up for us tonight as, and we got a lot of good feedback on, on the, uh, on that, uh, public hearing and it's that that, um, that hearing is in my, my district, of course, and, you know, we always are, I think, as Mr. Williams said earlier, that we're here to protect, you know, the, the, the adjacent property owners and also of course, the applicant himself. And I know the applicant probably put in quite a bit of time and effort and money, um, into that. The, the design and, uh, obviously kind of engineering involved in that stuff costs a lot of money, I'm sure. Um, so if I'm glad that we tackled it because I'm kind of of the mindset, we need to figure out a way to make it work until we've exhausted all other, um, possibilities and, and, um, and I, and I hope that we can come to a solution with that, maybe in September or whenever we do. Get their study done and figure out what needs, needs to be done with, um, holding the council ready. But I think that we, um, yeah, it gives an opportunity and also for Mr. Kessler to, to talk with the adjacent property owners and figure out what, where they're need, how, how can they satisfy their requests as well. So hopefully, hopefully in a couple of months we'll be back here and. Things, uh, pretty good pets, so to see. Um, but it's good. Make sure the staff as well.
Uh, echo what everyone else here said, um, probably I, I utilize or, or have more interaction with the staff than, than most people. And I've said in the last couple of meetings that the process seems to be smoother and better all the time. Um, the last year since I've been on the planning commission, I mean, we, we've covered a lot of ground. We've ironed out a lot of details. I personally feel really good about it. We were all starting to gel very well and before the meeting started, I told Ms. Height how happy I am that she's back here and glad Mr. Williams is here with us. As we saw tonight, he's got a lot to add to the conversations as well and, and has a, a unique insight to the county as well. So I'm excited about that. And other than that, it's time to go home. Yeah, same thing. So everybody was a huge crowd. I was surprised when I got here. And I wanted to thank Mr. Wagner too. I didn't say anything last, but then for sure. If he even wanted to get off, I would have said something at the last, I mean, I appreciate his, uh, work with us over the last many, many years. And like I said, he was a beat up as I was too in the past. So we had a lot of insight in what that is, and it was strange that we had this communication with Beat up. As I said, at the twenty-fifth hour, I was like, my last time was something else. This time he was beat up. Play it last time with the shampoo and wrong forms on the internet. But thank you guys. Thanks for, for, welcome, Mr. Williams. And thank you, Seth. As always, you've done a great job. And we love all the details of these reports and sharing you as well.
So, Lou.
I have a motion made, probably seconded. I have a motion made probably seconded and after the next great discussion. Give me another phone call, please.
Mr. Helen.
Hi.
Ms. Helen, uh, Ms. Williams.
Uh.
Mr. Slater. Chairman Graham.
Being is adjutant. Thanks everyone for coming.